Afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regular council meeting, City of Gulf Shores. It's September thirteenth, and I will call the meeting to order. And at last, ask Senior Minister of St. Andrews by the sea Larry Wood to help us lead us with the implication.
Thank you so much, Mayor Craft. May we bow together at prayer? For God, we thank you for this season. After a busy summer with so many guests in our community, now the streets are a little more calm, and we can appreciate it all over again in a fresh way. That's how blessed we are to be here. And we thank you too for this regular exercise in what it means to be community. To come together in this room, hear news, to celebrate, steps forward to become the good solid community base decisions. We thank you for those leadership in this community, or responsibilities that they shoulder. We thank you for the first responders and many others who are working so hard on our behalf. And we pray blessings upon one another, upon all in this town. I ask these things in the name of the God of all people, and also in the name of Christ Jesus Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry. Well done. One of you call roll, please.
Mr. Garris.
Here.
Mr. Sinat.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Dyken.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mayor Craft.
Here.
First item on the agenda this evening is six sets of minutes to approve. We've got several regular meetings in there, but we had a hurricane preparation. We had a legal council with our attorney. We had other issues that had to be discussed in private with our attorney in special session. So we're going to do them all, though. So the first one to minutes to approve and consider is on August the twenty-third, the regular council meeting of that day.
Motion to approve August twenty-third regular council meeting.
Second.
A motion and second approve these minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. The next set of minutes is from August the twenty-ninth. This was an emergency council meeting, a council meeting that was hurricane related. Those minutes are presented also.
Move for approval of August twenty-ninth emergency council meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion and second approve these minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Two abstentions. Thank you. Duly noted. The next was an executive session on August the thirty-first.
Move for the approval of the minutes of the August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one executive session.
Second.
A motion and second approve these minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. The next set is the same night on the thirty-first, a special meeting. Those minutes are presented also.
Move for the approval of the August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one special meeting.
Second.
A motion and second approve these minutes. Any discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. The next set is a special meeting minutes of September the seventh. Presented for discussion approval.
Move for the approval of the minutes of the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one special meeting.
Second.
A motion and second approve those minutes. Any discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, the last Monday on the September the seventh, the council work session meeting minutes.
Motion to approve September seventh, twenty-twenty-one council work session.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. Next item is the approval of expense vouchers in the amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Yes, sir. Mayor, sixty thousand were for Bodenhammer renovations, ninety thousand was for insured Sally repairs, and three hundred and fourteen thousand of those expenses were for capital projects, including County Road Six, Highway one eighty-two, Beach Walking District, and the medical facility. So the total in non-operating expenses was four hundred and sixty-four thousand, two forty-nine, which made the net operating expenses nine hundred and two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Cindy.
Move for approval of said expense vouchers.
Second.
A motion and second to approve this expense vouchers as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those expense vouchers are approved as presented. The next item is we have a presentation from Deputy Police Chief Dan Niedemeyer and Fire Chief of Operations, Robert Rowland.
Afternoon, Mayor, Councilman Miss Wanda. As you all know, we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Sally that hit us here in Gulf Shores. And what a lot of people don't realize is in the immediate aftermath of the hurricane, we at the police department received a tremendous amount of support and assistance from law enforcement agencies and first responders all across the region. After the hurricane, we decided that we too were going to participate in a form of aid to help those who are affected by a hurricane. So the Gulf Police Department, Police Association held a golf tournament to partially raise funds for what we could do. So we have, this year, we sent a group to Hammond, Louisiana. There were eleven of us that went. There were five from the fire department, four from the police department, one from Public Works, and one from the IT department. And I'll explain why all that was so important here in the next few minutes. Our whole goal is to be self-sustaining. We had a lot of people that showed up here that showed up with a need. Our goal was to show up and be self-sustaining and be able to handle our situation. And because of your generosity and what the city provided to allow us to go and some of the equipment, we were able to do that. Additionally, Lee Steiner loaned us a Skid steer that was instrumental in us getting done what we could, because we would not have been able to do what we eventually were able to do had we not done that. Jonathan from Public Works came, and we immediately had an issue with our generator. Rather than call somebody, he fixed it. So here, Robert's going to give a little summary of what we did while we were there.
So yeah, this is us kind of getting together the first day we were there. It was Wednesday with the fire chief. We'd already met with the police chief, kind of got a list, kind of got a name of all the people that were affected the worst from the first responder list they had. This is us over at a meet fire department. This job here, I think we've got some more pictures on if you can see that one also. May have been close to maxing out our limitations of what we could do with the equipment we had, but I'm glad to say we got it done. This is Officer Eric Watson's house. He hadn't been home yet at this point. He came by to check on it for one second. This is a very large oak tree that was on his house and inside of his house. We were able to get it off. It took some time. On that right picture, we're actually rebuilding the ridge there so that we could tarp it, try to keep any further water from getting in. And this is firefighter Skip's house. He had a lot of damage as well. The most damage he had was in the back of his house. This is going to be where it was on top of it. He had a big camper back there, which we'd already pulled out prior to this picture. But probably a hundred, hundred-and-fifty-foot oak tree was through his shop there and on his camper and on some other trailers. Were able to get that off and free all that for him. And this is just another example of one of the other things we came into. Our biggest thing we went there was to get trees off of houses, tarp houses to keep any further damage, get trees off driveways. Where we can get first responders in and out of their house to get back to do repairs.
So I mentioned before that we had, we brought some key elements. So probably the biggest key last Saturday was we started early in the morning so we could finish off the list. We brought Mike Holly, our IT guy with us, so we were able to take in a little college football last Saturday. So it wasn't like we suffered the entire time we were there.
I'm a Miami fan, so I don't watch much.
But that's all we have. If you all have any questions or anything else, we do truly appreciate it. As you know, after Hurricane Sally last year, because our officers in the fire department were able to stand up and work the checklist and checkpoints and do all that, we had no cases of looting here in Gulf Shores. This allowed them to minimize their looting cases. The one case of theft that we did have go on here in Gulf Shores, was a couple of people who decided to break in some cars down at Tacky Jack's. Let's just say they were met with an overwhelming amount of force that day, because we had plenty of officers on duty that didn't have to worry about that. We caught them before they left town.
Okay, and thank y'all for volunteering to do that, and I think kudos to y'all. Make sure that gets on our website and let the world know exactly how fortunate we were to have the help we had, number one, in thanking them appropriately for helping us, and then our willingness to go out, or their willingness to go out on their own and repay the favors. So thank you, guys, for doing that. Grant, you've got a public assembly permit in addition to talk about?
Yes, sir. As we reviewed last Monday, Dennis Young with the Robert St. Rotary Foundation has once again applied for a public assembly permit to host a five K in one-mile fun run in conjunction with Lulu's. It's the Doc's Hot Trot for A R C. The proposed date is November the sixth at eight a.m., and this is a run that's been well-established in our community for a number of years. The route runs from Lulu's restaurant eastward into the airport Business and Aviation Park, rotates and rolls back to Lulu's where the after event takes place. Application's been through the oversight of all of our departments and it's recommended approval.
Thank you, Grant. Council, any questions or comments?
Move for the approval of public assembly permit application for Doc's Hot Trot for A R C.
Second.
A motion and second approve this public assembly permit as presented. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That public assembly permit is approved as submitted. Thank you, Grant. Brandon, you've got Resolution sixty-four fifty-one, and I'll let you tell us about that.
Sir, Mayor, last week I updated you in the council about a property on three hundred Sunrise Drive that we declared a nuisance, unsafe, and kind of gave you the background of the property owner. And we left it last week that the property owner was going to present a plan to staff, and I would present that to you guys. And she did, in fact, that afternoon, send a plan that we found very vague. It only considered two steps and two phases in the project, didn't have really defining dates involved in her plan. One was she wanted a few weeks to scavenge the property for any wood that she may want to refurbish. And the second phase was to demolish the structure. She did ask for the six weeks, and after reviewing it, we feel like thirty days from the date of adoption of a resolution tonight would be plenty of time to have that property, the structure removed from there. We did get some feedback from neighbors with concerns that if we were to issue this permit to a property owner to demolish their own structure, how would that affect the environment? How would it affect neighboring properties? State of Alabama does allow a homeowner to obtain permits for anything relating to single-family structures, whether it's to build it or demolish it. So the homeowner can obtain this permit. We will make sure that they put all the safeguards in place to protect the environment and also those neighboring properties that the code allows for us to do. So with that, what I want to do is recommend to you tonight to adopt a resolution that will allow us to enter into an agreement with Steiner Services not to exceed twelve thousand dollars to begin thirty days from tonight. So this will allow Ms. Watson thirty days to demolish the structure or either scavenge any products that she wants from that structure. And then at the end of thirty days, it will allow us to go in and make sure everything's removed. So, any questions?
Council, any comments, questions?
Yeah, when a property is required to be demolished like that, Brandon, does our ordinance address foundations? Would it require her to remove pilings and foundations and restore proper drainage in the condition of the site? What, how does our ordinance address those issues?
Our codes and ordinances state that the structure must be removed. And the way we interpret that is that a foundation is part of that structure. So whether it's a concrete foundation, piling, supports, foundation, we require every portion of that structure to be removed from site.
What about septic tank?
Septic tanks in those situations, in the past, we've actually coordinated with the county health department, and they typically fill those in. They'll actually have them pumped out and filled in. One of the things that we do require prior to issuing these permits is that the Baldwin County or Utilities Board signs off on it or whatever utility may be in place, and also EMC signs off saying that power's been safeguarded, plumbing's been disconnected. So we make sure that's in effect, and we also coordinate with the county health department whenever there are septic tanks on site.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions for Brandon?
I'm assuming when you say foundations to be removed, that's not, I don't know, by looking at the house, that's not cutting the pilings off at the ground, that's pulling the pilings out?
That is, that is our interpretation of that, Mr. Garris.
So Brandon, will this ordinance allow for, say she's like ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent complete at the end of the thirty days, will it give you a little discretion to work with her a few more days to get the other one or two percent demolished?
The intent of this ordinance, is that in the thirty days that we can send our contractor in and go ahead and clean it up? That is the intent. Now, if it's just a few things here or there that make sense to let her go in, I'm sure that we can. But the intent here is to make sure that we're able to make sure that site is cleaned up at day thirty-one.
And I would think that if there were a little bit left and she hadn't gotten it done, we're going to get it out regardless.
Yes, sir.
And that way, we know, because we got the neighbors out here that have lived with us for a long time. And I'm going to give you all, if you've got any comments on this decision up before we go to it, and I'm going to give you another chance to talk to us. So I think that thirty days, we immediately clean that up, regardless of what she's got left, and make it clear.
I like that, and you bring up the neighbors, and I do want to, I'm very appreciative of how the neighbors have been dealing with this process and coordinating and the communication back and forth with me.
Yeah, I agree with Mayor Craft, because I think Ms. Sanders emailed me at least two months ago talking about this property. It may have been three months ago.
Longer than that.
And this has been a long, drawn-out thing, so I'm agreeing that day thirty-one, get it cleaned up, no matter what.
I agree, and I have a question. I know when you discussed this last week, there was an additional property that's dilapidated as well. Are we doing the appropriate measures for these other properties in that neighborhood that are in a similar condition, maybe not as severe, but still needing attention?
We are. The neighboring property at three oh four, we actually went in and we removed some of the vehicles that were no longer licensed, tagged appropriately. We have received bids for actually going in and cleaning up those properties, and we've actually issued citations to the property owners. And I know there's been a lot of going through the court process. It's kind of taken longer than what we had hoped for. But yes, sir, we are dealing with that structure as well.
Great, thank you. And hopefully, we're doing this throughout our entire community, not just that neighborhood.
Not just that, when we.
Other areas in the city that have that kind of need as well, and I think we should aggressively pursue that, and we need to clean up these dilapidated structures in our community.
And like I started last meeting off, last Monday, we teamed up with the zoning department and code enforcement, and I put our inspectors, being they're out in the field so much more and having so many more eyes, we created a list of properties throughout the city that we've been able to go in. And I think we're making a big difference around, not just that one area, but throughout the entire city.
And just one other comment, I know we're talking about single-family residents. I don't know if this is applicable to businesses that may be in disrepair as well, but I think that's something we all look at and consider as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Neighbors, have you all got anything that you'd like to comment on? I feel pretty confident this is going to happen, and we really appreciate your patience and communication with us, and thank you. But if you got anything you want to say, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you all for what you're doing.
Got it. That's Resolution sixty-four fifty-one.
Motion to approve Resolution sixty-four fifty-one.
Second.
A motion and second to approve and adopt this resolution as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-four fifty-one is approved and adopted. Thank you, Brandon. Next, we have Resolution sixty-four fifty-two. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is for business license revocation, a public hearing that I'm requesting that we reschedule from tonight to January the twenty-fifth. We've been working with the landfill people. Today, our surveyor was out on the site and verifying heights and from some drone photos that were taken a couple of weeks ago. Also, the city engineers reviewing an expansion plan that they presented and comparing that against some of the rights of way that are needed for the road network out there. And the most particular thing is between the expansion that they're wanting and the existing landfill condition, he's, the city engineer is verifying what the cap cost are to finalize that site and what bonding is necessary to be put in place in conjunction with that. So most of this work is right now with us, so I would recommend that, I said the twenty-fifth, we move the public hearing to September the twenty-seventh, two thousand and one.
September the twenty-seventh. And they are not operating and they will not operate until.
That's correct.
There's nothing new going in there, so that's Resolution sixty-four fifty-two.
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-four fifty-two and waive its reading.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve this resolution as presented. Any discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-four fifty-two is approved and adopted. Next, we have Resolution sixty-four fifty-three. Mark.
Sir, just to remind everybody, this is to purchase mast arms to be constructed for a new signal that will be located at East Second Street and East Highway one eighty-two. This is on Beach Boulevard there in front of the public beach access for residents, and across the street is Gulf Island Grill and Hooters. So this is the, I think if you want to pull the map up. But this is just to purchase the mast arms, and there are no changes from last week's presentation.
Thank you, Mark. That's Resolution sixty-four fifty-three.
Move for the.
Go ahead.
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-four fifty-three and waive its reading.
Second.
A motion and second to approve and adopt Resolution sixty-four fifty-three. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-four fifty-three is approved. Mark, you got another one?
Yes, sir. Before going, Councilman Garris had asked last week regarding the additional Southbound Lane that we're working on for Highway fifty-nine as part of our bill grant program. If we were looking specifically at Twentieth Avenue as well as Clubhouse Drive, and I knew, I could confirm last week that we are looking at Twentieth Avenue, and also I talked to the engineers, and every intersection is being looked at for improvements, but Clubhouse Drive is also being looked at for signal improvements as well at that intersection to help with the congestion. All right, well, that, my second item tonight is the Drainage Maintenance Bid from McElhenney Construction. I'm recommending a warrant in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is based on the Drainage Maintenance Budget that Public Works has. As I stated last week, these services will supplement the Public Works Department, and Noel Hand, the Public Works Director, will be identifying areas of need and will be directing the contractor at his discretion as where he needs them to perform.
Thank you, Mark. That's Resolution sixty-four fifty-four.
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-four fifty-four and waive its reading.
Second.
A motion and second to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion, comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-four fifty-four is approved, and Mark, you are going to watch carefully. This is a pretty high unit cost bid.
It is.
And make sure that this is working efficiently. We're not committed to do one hundred and fifty. This is, we can't, just can't go more than one fifty.
That's correct.
So you're going to monitor how this is going and if it's accomplishing our goals.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have, you're up again with sixty-four fifty-five.
Yes, this is to approve a drainage study for the Jack Edwards Airport, and those costs are to be split fifty-fifty with the Gulf Shores Airport Authority. costs are to be split 50/50 with the Gulf Shores Airport Authority. Our recommendation is approving a drainage study in amount not to exceed $20,375, which is one-half of the total cost of the study for BARS Design Solutions. And they'll be evaluating the perimeter drainage systems for Jack Edwards Airport, looking specifically at areas that may need improvement or upsizing to prevent flooding of the T-hangers in major rain events. And they are also going to look at the infrastructure in and around the control tower as well as the future terminal to make sure that there's no additional improvements needed in advance of those projects being completed.
Will this also give us information as we start working on Waterway East?
Yes, sir.
And all of that, because all of that is combined together. So this is, this drainage plan, our portion of that will give us more information on that road, correct?
It will. There's two specific drainage crossings on Waterway East that's part of this study, as well as the drainage crossing that goes through David Lorenza's property, which is also downstream of Waterway East.
And that's Resolution 6455.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 6455 and waive its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve this resolution as presented. Any discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6455 is approved. Next item, we have Resolution 6456. Chief Delmore.
Mayor for next. The next two items are really fit together. The first is to authorize you to sign a contract with Extra Duty Solutions, a provider that facilitates our officers' off-duty employment, and just as importantly, provides indemnification for the city and for the officers who are working extra-duty assignments. This has been reviewed by the city attorney. It's a no-cost item to the city. And then, the second...
We'll move on that one, then we'll go to the next one.
Yes, sir.
Explain that. It's Resolution 6456.
Move for the approval of Resolution 6456 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve this resolution as presented. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6456 is approved and adopted. Chief, go ahead.
And so, part two of two is to amend the employee handbook authorizing me or my designated deputy chief to approve off-duty assignments for officers within the city limits. And if there are off-duty assignments that we approve of outside city limits, those also will require additional approval by you.
This is Resolution 6457.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 6457 and waive its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve this resolution as presented. Any discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6457 is approved. Chief, you're going to do the next one too, which is Ordinance 2039?
Yes, sir. No changes to that. As you heard last week, this is simply to make appropriate, appropriately-equipped golf carts legal in the Adventura subdivision.
Move that we suspend rules of procedure that we may consider this ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and second to suspend the rules. Wanda?
Mr. Garris?
Aye.
Mr. Sinat?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Craft?
Aye. The rules are suspended. We're free to consider Ordinance 2039.
Move for the adoption of Ordinance 2039 as presented. Waive its reading.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adopt this ordinance as is. Wanda?
Mr. Garris?
Aye.
Mr. Sinat?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Craft?
Aye. Ordinance 2039 is approved and adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That ends all of the new business for this evening. Are there any committee reports, counsel? Hearing none? Or is, I haven't asked anyone from their staff if they have a report they need to give. Has anyone got anything of information that the public needs to hear? Mr. Franklin?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to remind the community that this Saturday, the 18th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, we will have two locations for the Alabama Coastal Cleanup. One will be at Golf Place on the West Second Street entrance and the, under the shade structures there, and the other will be at Mo's Landing. Ask that anyone want to participate at Mo's Landing this year, bring their own kayaks and help clean up the lagoon. So just wanted to remind everyone of that event occurring this Saturday.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that had something they'd like to present to the council that wasn't able to get on the agenda? Yes, sir. Y'all decide who goes first. You both said the same time, so come ahead, please.
Mayor and counsel, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I am a resident of the city of Gulf Shores and am trying to apply for state licensure. State licensure is requiring fingerprints be taken. I go to the city of Gulf Shores website. It says that I can get those for free as a resident at the police department. When I called the police department, they informed me that they're not doing that currently due to COVID. As a law-abiding citizen my entire life, I find it troubling that Gulf Shores finest would not hesitate to fingerprint me if I was a criminal, but as a law-abiding citizen trying to fulfill a state requirement, I'm unable to get that done. And I would ask for you guys' help so that I can get that license. Thank you.
What was your name, sir? I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. My name is Chris Graham. That's C-H-R-I-S-G-R-A-M-M. I live on the poor side of County Road 4. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, and what I will do, if, I'll have our police department check through that and see if there's a way to do that and let you know. And if it can be done, I'm sure it'll help you. But I, I'm not promising it can be done, but I'm saying if it can, we will help you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Lorenzo Reese, and I'm a little nervous here because what I'm going to talk about, it's going to take only about two or three minutes.
Okay.
Okay? The Seventh President of the United States, Mr. Andrew Jackson, once stated that "The wisdom of man never yet contrived a system of taxation that would operate with perfect equality." The statement of Mr. Jackson is still true today. I understand that we have a surplus, but we still have a revenue problem. For example, we need additional revenue to improve the quality of life, to build and maintain our infrastructure. It's needed to clean up and beautify our city and eliminate outsours. Therefore, we must create a wow factor to promote and attract new businesses. An empty lot equals lost revenue. Revenue is needed to expand our police and fire department. It's needed for our schools. It's needed for administration costs, our legal battles. It's needed to, for hurricane relief, transportation, depreciation to offset inflation recession, and it's needed to eliminate short and long-term debt. So how can we attain new revenue? We can train, attain new revenue through new business opportunity. Currently, our kids and grandkids are leaving this area because they do not, because of the lack of business, job opportunities, excuse me. Everybody don't want to be in the hospitality industry, and that's what we mostly depend on. Increase revenue through mixed-use development. Mixed-use development are extremely important to this city. Increase revenue by providing better retail. Retail is not dead. You just ask Wanda, or even ask your wife or your daughter. Increase revenue through providing better accommodation. Most of our new development today is single-family development, okay? However, one hotel, just one hotel could create more revenue for this city than the entire community of Craft Farm, okay? However, most of our accommodation are poor. As an example, the Gulf State Park has the best hotel that we have. In the rest of the city, Hampton Inn has the best hotel in this city. Hampton Inn is a low-scale hotel, and Hilton Hotel changed. We don't have one mid-level hotel. We don't have a upper-level hotel. We don't have a luxury hotel, okay? But one of those hotels alone can generate enough revenue to offset Craft Farm. Because see, single-family communities, single-family community, how much I love them and how much, and I live in one, I live in Craft Farm, in the long run, they actually lose money for the city. But most people don't realize that. So we have to educate the public. We need a larger portion of revenues from the gas rigs. We need more revenue for fighting for our attacks, school dollars. Right now, I think that Baldwin County is cheating us, and it's hard to say that in front of the public like this, but Baldwin County is cheating us. Instead of growth fund and municipal endowment, growth fund and a municipal endowment, it would improve our debt-to-debt repayment rating. Once you improve a certain on your rating, that's increased revenue for the city. We can increase revenue by seeing where we are wasting money. Once you see where you're wasting money, it actually increased revenue for the city as well. There, we must create a public and private partnership. That public and private partnership can come from places like the University of Alabama, Auburn University. These people have some incredible experts that can work with Blake, that can work with people like Mark, that can work with people like Mr. Lee Jones and here. They can work with us to help us to create information, to help us plan our city and to move forward. We could take the information that we learned, the data that we learned from these people, we could take that data, and we can go forward to improve our city and to help guide us in the future. Finally, I would like to say we must annex outside of our city limits. We got to do it. I know it's hard to do it, but you got to annex outside of our city limits, and we can never become complacent again. If we become complacent against all these outsours that you guys are talking about, the dilapidated homes, they're going to come back again. I know. I've been involved in Detroit City for a long time because my family lives there. Detroit City was the most successful city on the planet Earth. People don't realize it was the most wealthiest city on the planet Earth. Not even New York, Hong Kong, none of those cities was more wealthy than Detroit. Detroit City now is a joke. It's a disaster now they're trying to rebuild. And so, if you become complacent, this thing is going to happen again, so don't become complacent. And then, the final thing I would say is this here. Work with the public. If we work with the public and educate the public about what we're doing, the public will better understand, and they will accept change. If you don't educate them, they're not going to accept the change that is needed for the revenue to make this city better. Thank you.
Thank you. Well-stated. And I didn't hear a thing I disagree with. So, thank you for that. Anybody else with any thoughts, comments?
I'd just like to comment to some of the things that you said. I mean, we probably haven't been as good with communicating all the various things that are going on in the city, and I think those are wonderful points that you made, and we are actually addressing every single one of those points that you made, Lorenzo. And so, I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront of our conversation, because, you know, behind the scenes, our staff and all our departments, and I know everyone involved with the city is, you know, concerned about those things and really addressing every one of those aspects, whether it's multi-use development, whether it's, you know, exploring other revenue sources, looking at ways to decrease our expenses, looking at bond ratings, you know, all those things to really upgrade the city and make the city the best it can be. So, no one here is getting complacent, I can promise you that. If you know how often Robert texts everyone here at this council, it's several times a day, it seems like, for meetings to address all those various issues. So, everyone is actively engaged, all our department heads, all the department, city employees, and all the elected officials are focused on that and working diligently for the city for that. So, thank you for your comments.
Jason, thank you. I would, I will promise you that it's not going to be too terribly long before we're going to have another town hall meeting where we met before, we talked about all the things we wanted to do. We will have an update meeting coming before the end of the year that kind of tells you where we are and what we're doing on all these things that Jason just mentioned we're working on, because there's a lot of them, and there's progress being made. And I agree with Jason that almost every point you mentioned, we're already discussing. So, thank you. It was reinforcement, and that feels good to hear that the public, our constituents, our family here, they want the same thing we want. So, thank you for that. Your motion, we adjourn. I think, unless, anybody got anything? Anybody else have anything?
Motion adjourned.
Motion and second to adjourn, we stand adjourned. Thank you.